Call this meeting to order. We have the Boy Scouts here who will be our color guard today as long as you're here, if you don't mind. You can bring the flag up front and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Watch out for that.
It's long around one.
Can't go right there, that's fine.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Boy Scouts are here for a government merit badge. Can you tell me what it is?
Citizenship and community.
Citizenship and community. Thank you. Don't be afraid to ask questions. This is a pretty open meeting, so if something confuses you, go ahead and ask because it usually confuses us too. So, we'll figure it out together. Amendments to the agenda.
Oh, how about a personnel executive session in addition to the police union contract?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will be added to the executive session at the end of the meeting. Okay. Adoption, approval, is that it?
For me.
Anybody else? Approval of minutes for October 8th?
Most except the ninth or October 8th, that's presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
A third page, hold your. The fairhaven officers spend zero percent of the time out of town. That's not true.
No.
Where is that? Is that?
Last year for eight officers spent zero percent of the program time. Is that, that's what we're trying to get?
Oh.
That refers only to the program and that's what the gentleman said.
They spend out of town. They're not, it's not just in town.
But wait a minute, what was discussed? That's what they said.
But it's not true.
And that's what the minutes are.
Well, maybe, but that's what he said. So, that's what's in the minutes.
That's not what's happened in the past. So, it's according to this, is they spend zero percent of the time out of town. And that's not true.
Okay. Then you could say that the chief claims that, but that's what was discussed. You might disagree with it. I understand you disagree, but that's what was discussed. That's what the minutes should reflect.
I don't remember.
The chief didn't say that. It was, what's his name?
Gino.
Right, where is Gino?
I saw him yesterday. I couldn't recognize him.
But that's, you're out of town. You're not just strictly in town.
So, could you add that as an addendum?
Or just take it elsewhere.
Well, the point, the points, well.
Should reflect the discussion.
Right. That point is well taken.
Clarify who said it.
What you could add is an addendum that you disagree.
Officer Zeno, Gino said, stated that. Is that what you're?
Because if that's what he stated, then that's what's going to happen. That means no twenty-two way.
No twenty-two way.
But it's. As in the past.
No, I.
Last year. Now, wait a minute.
Last year.
I've got to just read. The grant language is the same as in the past. And then last year, Fairhaven officers spent zero percent of the program time out of town. They didn't participate in the click it or ticket program. Well, I'm not going to change it because that's what he said.
Well, hang on. You're not going to make that decision. Just, that's a first thing. The board will. But I think that's correct in that, that that's what was said. So, that has to stay in. So, if you wanted to add as an addendum, a disagreement, that's the way.
They do travel out of town.
Just a point of order. Do you add that as an addendum to this minutes, or do you let the minutes from this meeting show that there was discussion in the minutes and there was an issue taken?
And this.
I feel more comfortable that that's the proper way to handle that. Not changing the minutes.
Okay. I get what you're saying. That's very.
And that takes care of your concern where you get.
Yeah, and then it takes your clearance too.
That you don't agree with it and it's concerning.
So, yeah.
Saying in the past, it's been out of town where it hasn't been strictly in town.
Okay. So, that would, that would be a discussion that would reflect. And then the meeting's coming in this minutes for this meeting.
So, what do you want it to say?
Leave it, leave it as, leave it as is.
But what do you want it to say now?
No, in.
Previous years, it has been, they've been out of town. That hasn't been strictly in town.
In the discussion of the minutes.
In the discussion of the minutes, yep.
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting, yep.
That's what I'm talking about is.
Yep.
In the past, officers have spent.
Time out of town.
Governor's safety grant time out of town.
Right.
Got it.
Anything else? Any other additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. High school turkey trot?
Yes. The high school's doing their turkey trot again this year and they wanted to come in and talk to the board slightly about it.
So.
Wait, did any of the kids come? Oh, you are the kids. Okay.
And now the senior class.
Oh.
So, yeah, so the senior class is holding the seventh annual turkey trot. Where the registration money will go to the class, which will help pay for our senior trip, our senior prom location. And then also runners will be able to bring in non-perishable food items. And then we will donate that to Fairhaven concerned. So, that's happening on November 16th, which is a Saturday. And we will begin at the Fairhaven Union High School and go around the softball field and then to Mechanic Street and then taking a right onto Fourth Street and then onto Airport Road. And then they will go around Pavilion. They will turn around and then come back to Fourth Street and end up back at the high school.
I think you just contact the police department and maybe the public works just for cones where necessary and that kind of thing like that. You've probably done that in the past anyways. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. You're on.
You're on. It's a good start.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on being a senior.
Thank you.
Wait till you see what happens next.
Five minutes for public comment. Absolutely.
So, I heard about the sewage bond and that, and I heard that all voters get to vote on that. I have a question about that.
Sure.
So, all voters get to vote on that, yet a lot of people don't run on Town Water. They don't pay for that.
Right.
Why is that?
Because it's an enterprise fund, which you can look up because I can't give you a good description of what an enterprise fund means, except that because it is, the state requires that everybody in the town, because everybody, I guess probably the easiest way to describe it is, everybody in town is responsible for the bond if the water and sewer, and particularly the sewer people fail to pay. The town is responsible for it. The rest of the voters are responsible to make that. So, they have to be able, they have to be allowed to vote. In Castleton, they have water districts.
Yeah.
And the difference there is just the district votes on bad appropriation. And so that's essentially the difference. Ours is an enterprise fund, which is different than a water district.
Self-sustaining. Good question.
It is a good question. And does that explain it enough for you, or?
Yeah.
I'm not the authority, but that's how it's been explained to me, I think. Yeah, thanks. Any other questions? You guys have any, please don't be afraid to ask. This is a participation operation here. We, when we talk about something, we, we want everybody to be involved. The more people involved, the more the discussion is. Every question gets asked and that's a good thing. Thanks. Any other? Okay, we will move on.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Preparatory head reports.
Been patching puddles. Getting the sewer truck back together finally. Cutting trees. Trying to get the garage so we can get the equipment in there that made it out. That's about it. Raided some roads today. Better do it in the pollen. What do I got? Benson vein. I think those two roads are left. That's all I got left to do. Hopefully by Thursday, I can have that out. I guess that's about it. I'll do the one little thing. Glenn, I think you need to, you owe me an apology from last meeting. For saying.
I know what I, what I will do.
For saying that I don't know what I'm doing.
I, I made a statement and if you felt that I said that, you don't know what you're doing, then I do apologize for that. What I said was, I'm disappointed because I don't believe we're doing as much as we can be doing. That said, let me come back and thank you for the nice job of patching Pine Street and the other, the other puddles around town. Looks pretty good right now.
Thank you. I'm behind the eight ball here and I'm doing the best I can do with.
But it's not a question of not knowing what you're doing. My concern was more, we had more projects started than we had finished. And we maybe need to have a little less reach and complete what we put our hands up. That was what I was intending in last meeting.
And that's, that's true. Sometimes I get a job going and then I get pulled off.
And I think that's, I think that's communication. And we only see it every two weeks. So, that's, that, we fully understand it. That's one of my, when I ask, and I ask on a regular periodic basis for a calendar that says we're doing this, this, and this. And if that's possible, then you can just say, well, it rained those two days and we weren't able to, that's cool. And in general, we're very happy with the job we're getting. So, don't feel like we're, that that's, that's a problem. We're, I think, I think the idea, Glenn's, Glenn's concerns are, is, and all, you know, we, we want to see jobs complete, but we understand there's bumps in the road, bumps in the road, as they say.
The thing that I gotta, of course, we're gonna hire another guy hopefully right off. We're gonna do interviews Friday.
That'll help.
That'll help. Because today, I mean, today Nate took off and I had to run the dump truck and then go back and grab the grader and doing two things.
I have a question I'm going to ask actually. Is anybody learning to do the grader beside you, or do we have?
I, I think Nate can do it.
I think.
That is a good point. It's hard to manage if you're running the grader all the time. You've got to have other people.
Yeah, don't be afraid to, don't be afraid to spend some time training. I mean.
Cross training as well, be able to run the grader.
He's running it. He ran it here, I think.
Did he?
He did already.
Yeah, that's, don't be shy. I mean, we got them, that opportunity. You can step back a little bit.
It's one of those where he's either running the grader or the dump truck, or I gotta do it. Just another hand would be.
Yep.
Then I can.
Well, I don't, I know you enough, well enough to know that you're not going to step back completely, but.
I can.
No, and that's, that's fine as long as there's, as long as there's time to manage.
The people you're interviewing, do they have CDL licenses?
Yes. We wouldn't hire anybody that wasn't.
With the equipment, experience, and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
I think the, the contract says that they have to either be CDL or be able to get it. And we're not responsible for that, new people. And that was the union's decision, not ours. Thanks. You're up.
I'll start off and ask the board for some guidance. The police chief has a town of Fairhaven, Vermont fire discharge ordinance that was never adopted. Is the board interested in moving forward with the discharge ordinance? Discharge?
Oh, shooting. I thought we, the last meeting, it got tabled, but it was going into our parking lot is something, or, or did we not decide to?
I thought it was in the parking lot meeting.
Yeah.
Was it? I don't remember that conversation. But yes, I'll put it in the parking lot. We'll draft one up. Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was a couple complaints about security that.
And so, there's some, areas about that need to be really changed.
In this? All right, we'll put it in the parking lot and we'll.
That's.
The discussion last week was wanting to hold out so we could review it again.
I think so.
And reveal it.
And that's, that's the boilerplate one? Or is that the one we wrote a million years ago?
This is the one, yeah, this was the one from 2008 that we did, that the town did. Yeah.
But it never actually got adopted.
It was never adopted, no. This is back when Mr. Evans was the chair, Ron Evans. We'll whip something up. I got an update on the meters. We're up to 487 meters, which puts us at 53%. So, we're, and this is all, I have to tell you, this is Mike Le Duke. He's just been hammering these out. He's getting 10, 12, 15 a day. He's really doing it. You can't say enough good things about Mikey. He's doing a great job.
Are we getting, what's the feedback for holistic? Have you heard anything that have the new meters? You know how we thought that they might, that the old meters may not have been accurately deflecting the amount of water? Are the meter usage rates going up, staying the same, going down? What are you hearing?
Honestly, I haven't heard any real negative feedback at all. No, but we.
Nobody got a bill.
Right, I was going to say.
Because that would be the real test of the next step.
The ones that got built last time, they were higher.
I don't know if that's true, Jay.
I thought you emailed us.
So, what.
I thought you emailed us and they were about the same.
So, in the, in the summer, you'll see a higher rate in the summer, which is what that, the bill that you just received, not the recent one, but the one prior to that was summer. And everybody come, not everybody. Many people will come in in the summer and say, this is a lot higher than last time. It's because it's the summer.
Have they got the software set up or the showing?
We're still working on the dual system. So, people who get the new meter, who will have their first reading on the new meter at this time, they're going to get that funny bill until it's, we gotta work it through the system. It's a pain, but we'll get there.
I understand that the software all came with a bunch of gears.
The software is there, but the way our, the way our billing comes out to be able to put an old meter and a new meter, and then the readings on that and then the total.
I'm saying for all the new meters, we should have, they should have it in place.
Yeah, they have that.
If we're not going to get a funny bill, if you've had a new meter for the whole quarter.
Yes.
You're going to get a regular bill with a gallonage.
Yes. Oh, wastewater bond, did, did you guys get the, get your mailings?
Yes.
You did.
Okay, good. We hammered them out. So, we got the mailings out for the wastewater bond vote. Nobody came to the open house. Not one person. In front of you, this is exciting. So, in front of you, you'll see a terrible spreadsheet looks like that. I talked to the Secretary of State and they sent me over actuals from 2017, 2018, taxable sales in Fairhaven. The big number down on the bottom, 145,000. If that, if the people of Fairhaven voted to take and use that 1% sales tax in town, that's the amount of money this board would collect to put towards the bond.
At 1%.
At 1%. And that's all you can collect. So, I spoke with Bill Cantfield and he says he can work his magic on his end to make sure this can happen, to pass the bill through the state. I guess at this point, I'm looking for more guidance to see if the board wants to move forward with this.
And as, like this says, the state takes 30%, we keep 70.
Of the 1%, John. So, every dollar the town would take in, we keep 70 cents and the state takes 30 cents.
Mike, I asked Mr. Cantfield the question of what's going on with the marijuana legislation and how ways it means it's leaning towards the 1% option tax for, I'm saying, if we do a 1% option tax here, how is the legislation we're doing? He told me that the legislation on marijuana hasn't passed yet. I didn't get an answer, quite frankly. So, again, I still have the question in my mind. To answer your question, do we move forward with a 1%? I'm going, I want to know a little more about if we go with 1% there, does that mean, well, we've already went to the well, if we need to go again?
I think it'd be a 2%, I think they'd stack.
You can do 1% again?
It would be.
Well, the state would do 1%.
These, the voters have to approve what you will tax. So, meals and rooms, you would say, voters, would you like to put the 1% tax on meals and rooms? Or would you like to put the tax on alcohol? Or would you like just the regular sales? So, it's kind of like a à la carte. And I could imagine it would just be 1% on not being, not being there talking legislation. It might be an à la carte thing where you just say, now let's tax marijuana.
So, when I'm looking at you with the 1%, so it comes down to a town just to collect, when you take that dollar amount for the 1%, what does it bring the $59 usage rate?
70%.
70? What does, what does it bring the usage rate down to if you do that?
It would, it would cut that by, so this is 67% of that bond. So, I didn't do the math, but it would cut it by 67%.
Okay.
And these numbers are from 20, I need to qualify this. These are 2017, 18 numbers. I don't have a whole 18, 19 year yet, but it's, it shouldn't change dramatically.
Is that on rooms and meals or on across the board, 1%?
It can be anything we choose it to be.
What's the number? What does the number represent? You said 145?
145 is what the town would collect, yeah.
Max.
But, but the question was, is that on the total sales or is rooms and, room and board or alcohol?
Yeah. So, what's this, what you can't?
Meals and.
Yeah. What the, what the people in the, in the audience can't see is, so this is rooms and meals, retail, and then what the state labeled as use, use, which is just a sales that is taxable. And it's short money. So, rooms and meals comes to five and a half million dollars in taxable receipts. Retail comes at, comes to 15.2 million dollars in taxable receipts. And the use was at 87,000, so short money.
And the 145 was the 70%? Or was that the full 1%?
That's the 70% the town would take.
That figure is 70% of the dollar.
Of the 1%.
Okay. It makes a difference.
If the board wants, I can, I can move forward with this or I could stop. But I wanted to pull up some numbers so you guys had a better idea of what that would look like. I tried to get alcohol sales. It wasn't online. It was, it was restricted. I asked for that. So, I'm still waiting on those numbers.
Would that, but prove the alcohol sales at the liquor store also?
This? No, they, their numbers weren't online. I had to ask for them and they have.
Would that be, would that be part of?
If, if the board would like that to be voted on, yes. We would ask rooms and meals, alcohol, or retail.
You can't get them all?
Well.
You can do any or all, which I didn't know.
I remember the numbers, but rooms, that's a very small amount.
Five and a half million?
Rooms and meals is the big one.
Rooms and meals.
And retail's the big one.
One for, it's only like seven or eight.
That's the use one.
Use one, whatever that's, whatever that.
There was no explanation, yeah. It was just a taxable sale.
Other than retail and other than rooms.
Glenn, okay, we're going forward, we're talking about 67%. Now, if you don't, and this is without alcohol. So, it's probably, we're saying like 70%? And again, I'm trying to, just trying to.
Yeah, ish. About, it might be more, it might be less. I don't know what alcohol sales are like in town, so I couldn't say.
But you have to go through the state to do this and then people can vote on it?
The state will put a, and again, I talked to Mr. Cantfield. He will put a bill forward in the house.
House.
In the house. And they'll vote on it. And he said they almost always pass. So, once that's passed, that, that will let the town vote to say, yes, we would like to add this 1% tax.
I think we should do it for all. I think we should ask for all three. I would. I mean, we can always, become time to vote. We can always pick and choose then, right?
If we see something, if we see something that doesn't.
If we're going to go through a state, we ought to ask for all three.
Right.
And then, and then that way, we get time to let the public vote. If we just wanted to pool, we can't. I say the state will ask for all three.
How many municipalities have?
Oh, Manchester. There's, there's quite a few. I, I was talking to Colchester, which they're pretty affluent, but. Their situation was similar, where they used the 1% tax to pay down infrastructure repairs, which it worked really well for him then. I can get you a list of municipalities.
Can we sunset this?
I was talking to VLCT and they said, yes, you can do, the board can.
Payment, payment, pay it off, pay it off, and we can sunset.
Yeah, you can, you can just end it. What Colchester does is they, it's a quarterly payment from the state. The money comes into the town and it goes right into a bank account, like a, like a capital reserve fund. And then when the bond payment comes up, they take that money and, and pay, yeah, pay the man.
One thing about this is. honestly, there, there are other people besides the taxpayers if they're even paying this. That's...
It's your pleasure, I mean, you want to, can you continue?
I feel we play to the state for all three, and then do what we have to do there.
What do we have to do for the legislature?
Uh, Bill's, Bill's actually working on it now. He'll, he'll draft a bill and then submit it for vote.
So if we tell them not to, then they'll vote it. So, what's your pleasure, folks? Let's make that a motion, or might as well make it official. Is it on, yeah. It's not on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda for next time, and that way they'll give people that are concerned.
And could we, when we put it on the agenda for next time, could we check with Mr. Cantfield again? See, I'm, I'm no problem if there's something else that we can come back and add for another one percent option, but if we put a one percent option tax on everything to begin with, I keep saying...
Does that cover?
I'm pretty sure the way I was told.
You're done.
It's, so if, in our application or when we ask for it, do we have to say for the waterfront? If that's the case, we might want to put, still go ahead with it, but I want a little more flexibility in where I could spend that one percent, the general fund or whatever. So I, I just want clarification.
Well, the thing of this, they were talking about using this to pay down the sewer line.
Right.
And that's for, should be earmarked, that's for a debt note.
But if, again, my concern was after going to the Montleey City and Town meeting that they had there, I mean, we're talking about the upcoming and the first piece of legislation they're going to address in Montleey's marijuana and revenue generating towns, and they're talking about what percentage to help offset the cost of that. Pretty sure Ways and Means was saying that their proposal was to use the one percent option tax. So if we earmark it all to the sewer plant, understand we're not going to add those monies.
I see what you mean.
Right, and that's my only concern, and if, if that's not a valid concern, I just want to...
Why can't you just earmark it towards infrastructure?
Well, that's, I would earmark it to something more general than just the bond, the wastewater bond.
Because infrastructure is, as defined by the, well, I mean, there's, it's pretty well defined.
It's more, it's more difficult to sunset if you don't, if you, if you're saying infrastructure, people get very comfortable and, and, you know, once you start, once you start spending that money, you don't want to stop spending it. And, you know, talking like a tax and spend liberal, you know, I, I know those people.
You'll never, you've got a lot of my period.
Our voice ops are the only ones that'll be here when we get, that thing gets rid of the sunset.
Well, I mean, I, I, when we get to that point, I'd like to have that discussion too, so.
All right. Oh, tax sales next week, we'll talk about that, that's on the agenda. I scheduled an engineer to come in tomorrow to make sure that this building will support people upstairs, a couple hundred people in that auditorium, after, after that pillar got clipped with the, with the fire truck. That scared me a little bit, so. I'm going up to Montleey on Thursday to sign the revolving loan fund grant. The young lady was out, so we're finally getting that buttoned up. We got approval on the fuel tank. The, the state approved the closeout for the existing tank, and in your packets, there was a motion to accept the twenty thousand dollar no interest loan. Saltshid Engineering, we have our kickoff meeting on Friday at eight AM. And I'm looking at the park lighting and the park and ride improvement grants, which are both due in November. I know we don't like studies, but if we get these grants, it really is two years out. There's no way around these big construction projects. It's, so it's going to be like Mechanic Street, where we get some money and then we're just kind of doing the process.
Do we still have plenty of grant match, is it matching money involved in this?
Um, park and ride, we do have a streets and sidewalks fund that has two hundred and change in there. I'll have to look. But some of that is, on Mechanic Street, yeah. The park lighting, we have our grant match plus the concerts in the park, they have their twenty thousand.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Maybe more, looking at another year's worth of concerts and, and fifty-fifties. We'll look. It'll be here in the spring, we'll talk.
I have a question about the parking lot. So why do we have to do another study? We just had a, we had a study and a survey, so why do we have to do another?
They want to do the whole, let's dig it up and see if there's any Indian bones kind of thing there?
And our parking lot, Bell Street?
They do it on everything. It's just what, it's, I tried to take this out of the last contract for the salt shed, and he just sent it back to me and said, no. We had a study up there already, and they just rejected it flat out.
It may be less involved because it's downtown, but, but it's...
Or help us if they found, if they don't find a lot down there.
They're not going to find much there, but they may, you know, they may find some historical stuff.
Oh.
Buckles or something.
As of right now, we have outstanding tax sales of seventy-nine thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Almost eighty thousand dollars in back taxes that we're going to try to scratch back with tax sales. That's, I, I keep saying it's coming, but it's finally coming.
That'll be for another reading?
How much of the tax sales or rears, of rears have any agreements with them or, or is that all?
That's, that's just what we're going to, that's just what we're going to scratch back. We have agreements of sixty-five thousand dollars right now. And the Fort Belowitz properties, that's thirty-three thousand, so there's, there's money tied up out there in, in tax money.
Just make sure you follow the process.
We do.
To the T.
It's terrifying. Uh, I, so this came to me today, I could use, and I'm sorry, this is a lot today. The state sent back the, their grant and aid program, they sent the town back five thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-two cents. We would like to put that money into the highway equipment fund. Board is so inclined.
Where did it come from? I mean, what, what, what was that for?
This was grant reimbursement, so when the, when the guys went out and dug, they put in culverts and put in stone for the bank, it was money they sent us for like, uh, equipment time, equipment, equipment time, labor, that kind of stuff.
That was here, that was from Bigelow.
Yeah, materials.
So if we put it back in the equipment fund, we're going to lower the public works budget by that amount? Or we just add an additional one?
No, there's no taking why this.
We're not taking no more.
This is a check that they sent us, we're just, we just need to know where, where to put it.
Doesn't that need to...
I'll make a motion and we put five thousand, put it, five thousand, what?
Five, five thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-two cents.
That amount into the public works highway, for the equipment fund.
Sorry.
Isn't, isn't this reimbursement for the work we did? Yeah. So didn't we have costs that went out of the budget?
That's, that's what costs, that's what I...
We're not going to be over budget?
That's what I paid out from Bigelow, and they paid me back.
Right, aren't we?
They would have been doing something.
You see what I'm...
You, you can't put this back into the budget, though. This was last year's budget anyway, but you can't, you can't take that money and put it back in your budget.
It would have been, it's the, you know, essentially the, the labor that they're going to do anyways for forty hours a week. What's the number?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thank you. I always want to say eighty, twenty.
That would be nice, but...
Yeah, twenty-eighty. Okay, we got a motion, any other conversation?
That was the...
Let ourselves back for a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nice to get money back, yeah.
Okay.
That's, it's the same thing on Scottsdale.
Oh.
When I put up there, I'll get paid.
The water, the water department has cashed in some of those, some of that brass from the meters. They'll deposit one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars into their capital reserve fund for the board's discussion prior. Mechanic Street, I met with the state and the engineer. We're currently assessing liquidated damages. We thought it was seven hundred dollars a day. I got the updated contract, it's actually sixteen hundred dollars a day. As of today, we're scraping back of twelve, a little more than twelve thousand dollars out of the contract, because these guys just, they haven't been doing what they're supposed to be.
We're getting very close to the end of construction season, and they...
Are they going to come pave?
Yes. It's funny, when we told them they owed us twelve thousand dollars, I got an email and a phone call. The, they're coming, I think he said this week, to get the paving done, and they need to put a swale in, which they just decided not to do. Engineer says that'll correct the drainage problem. They did incorrectly elevate some of the sidewalk. It sounds like they might have to take out eight, eight or ten panels and re-pour that.
That's probably not going to happen this year.
I didn't think so, but everybody else seemed optimistic. They said you can pave all or lay concrete all year.
Well, that, yeah, but I mean, just a matter of working.
They can blanket it, right?
So, but that's where that's...
Keep on, because the pavement's got to be done. The pavement around there, they got it early cut, so a couple weeks after, it's got to be done, and because they've, they've ground out in the forestry, you know, spots, so it's got to be paved before then.
Yeah, they're, they're, I think he said this week, in fact. And we let them know, because it is Halloween, and I, I told them, if you look at these sidewalks, somebody had mentioned it, maybe Sam. If we got trick or treaters coming down, they try to head to one of these houses, some of those got big holes in them. Yeah, so I let them know, it's very clearly they need to get here and fix those holes, and the very least, make sure nobody's tripping. We're doing good, we don't have any lawsuits really, so we don't want any more. And that's all I got.
Sure.
Yeah, it was a lot, sorry. A lot's been going on.
Old business, used truck purchase. You're back on.
I gave you, I got two of them, a thirteen and a fifteen. International. What was the cost on the two thousand fifteen? Oh, you didn't? I didn't see it. I gave it to Bob. Bob got it.
Oh, I got the only copy of it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we only got the front page.
I only got the front page.
Whatever he handed you.
Just this one, this year?
I think that's, I think that's, I think it's, what is it, fifty?
Fifty-two minus, minus fifteen thousand for the two thousand nine, makes it thirty-seven, nine fifty.
Oh, no, that's the thirteen.
That's the thirteen.
That's the thirteen.
Oh, right, okay, so the fifteen...
Two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fifteen, it's also fifteen thousand.
I don't know that I have it. Is that, oh, oh, yes, I do, yes, I do. Sorry.
I thought I could see through.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, anyway, but this is, right, two thousand fifteen international, seventy-six hundred, the total...
It was fifty-nine.
Was it forty-three, seven fifty? Is that what I'm...
With the net.
That, that's what they'll sell it to us with the trade-in.
Trade-in. Oh, it's fifty-nine, seven fifty.
They give us sixteen thousand for our truck.
Sixteen thousand for our truck.
Fourteen-three, seven.
Forty-three, seven fifty.
And they, and that's only got thirty-six thousand miles on it.
Right, you might want to take a look at it, you guys will probably pick out specs.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
If this is the one, if this is...
And...
What's your truck on?
Are these others minus the trade-in somewhere?
For mine.
Are these others minus the trade-in too, or do, you have a trade-in on these as well?
Yeah, they'll, they'll give us, I think, Clark says sixteen, no, sixteen, no.
Forty-three, seven fifty.
Like a thousand dollars difference on trade-in.
You want to put them in a real spreadsheet?
And the fifteen, if we decide, it says right, right down below your right hand, they'll buy it back a year for forty-two or forty-five thousand.
In writing?
It's right there, I think.
Right on there.
I don't have that, but yeah, cool.
Basically, we're getting a truck for a year for our truck.
And that's probably Sandra.
Sandra.
Plow and Link.
Correct.
Give us two trucks of rings.
Where's money coming from?
Don't pay on sixteen-five.
Yeah. Because your reserve isn't enough for the rest, is it?
Nope.
And still warranty on the twenty fifteen.
The fifteen's got some warranties left on it. I got, I got the, I got twenty-five in my equipment fund.
What's your name?
Why don't you check down some money? On this one.
Which one?
The fifteen. On the fifteen. It's a better truck. That's the one we got.
Does it make sense to commit to that truck and then find, find the financing, or does it make sense to get financing and...
He'll give us a finance. I've already, I've already talked to him, get the financing.
You apply. I know, I know. I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying whether the financing was worthwhile, was...
I can almost tell the finances, no doubt.
What, what was his percentage?
You want to bring it back and talk about it?
Oh, that's not bad. No, that's a good, that's a good percentage.
I'm not sure.
How many, I understand, I understand the numbers I'm looking at here. If we don't buy another truck, what does that mean?
Means I got to dump twenty-five thousand in the one we got.
That's the one that got all bent up, the frames all bent up?
If we dump the twenty-five thousand in the one we have, do we still have a truck and comply? So we need a truck to plow. That, that is what I'm trying.
And this is a little more truck than we got, and it has the, all the fixins with it, which is, which is nice. That part I, that makes sense.
You've been up to look at?
Tell him.
What's your pleasure, folks?
I'm making a motion to buy the twenty fifteen international seventy-six hundred at the price of, after trade-in, of forty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, is that what it is?
Yes.
Where's money coming from?
Is there a second, we'll get a second, then you can ask that question.
I'll second.
Thank you. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Just wondering when Mike's going to come from motion. It's all finance for forty-two, or the balance of...
Or are we going to take twenty-five thousand down and balance finance? That we're going to put...
I don't want to see your reserve, I don't want to see the equipment fund here, no.
I'd, I'd rather finance it for three years, and your payments aren't nothing. Be twelve. Fifteen.
Tom, is your chewing his fingers right now at this point?
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
I'm listening patiently.
You're not, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Wonder what you think.
Well, you're asking my opinion, I, I, I think we should just use the truck that we have. We have spent a lot of money, this is, this is more money, and it sounds like we want to trade this in in a couple years and, and just flop it out. I, I don't, I don't... Coming from a place where we made do, the trucks that we have, we, we're not saying we don't need equipment, we definitely need equipment. A small town like this needs to make do sometimes, and this, this plow truck, I just honestly don't... A small town like this needs to make do sometimes, and this, this plow truck, I just honestly don't believe that it's just junk. I think we could, somebody's gonna take this truck and they're gonna go use this truck. I think we can use this truck.
Oh, is that plow on it?
No.
Yes, I'm saying somebody's gonna buy that truck and use that truck.
I don't fuck a lot of money.
No, I'm saying they're not going to, I'm gonna say that guy's gonna turn that truck around.
It won't even, it won't even go down the, it won't follow the road, guys.
They've, they've been using this truck.
Not after the last, the last time Jack dug in, that destroyed it.
I know, ever.
We can argue about this all day long.
We can, but at the same time, we.
Twenty-six miles a while. And we spend a lot of money for it.
And it's not that we don't need it.
On the other hand, you got a car that really doesn't save beyond the road.
No, you gotta bend it twenty. Aaron, I talked to Aaron today.
Dollars on this truck?
When Jack hit the, the first time, he bent it so bad it, it broke the, 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 uh, transmission out of it. Plus, Aaron had to put an inch block underneath the, the motor mount, just to get it back down, that's how bad the frame's bent, I'm sure.
So, if we.
Rattlesnake said he wouldn't put a sticker on it.
I, I was just gonna say, if we put, if we put twenty-five thousand and still not, may not be able to get it.
You gotta jump.
Row worthy is what you're.
And I'm not, it would be stupid for me to put twenty-five thousand dollars in there. It'd be stupid for you guys to let me put twenty-five thousand in, into it.
The question is, can you put five into it and go? The, cleaning the roads is important to me, I'm just wondering, I mean, we're probably gonna have.
With another wing truck, I can cut the overtime down, cause I'm making one pass on the road instead of four.
I've always wondered why we didn't have two wing trucks.
That will cut my, that will cut down, so there, I'm saving money. It's just that.
Any other questions?
When?
I think we should fill up the truck.
Yeah.
I think they should fill up the truck and see what it is.
Why don't we table this till next meeting, he can look at it, they can get the financing numbers, they can tell us what it's really gonna be, and we can make a decision in two weeks. And you can tell them that we're very interested. Right? So that they don't send it off the lot.
I know.
Right?
That's, that's the thing.
I think that's a good idea.
Prudent way to deal with it.
I could've had a new truck.
Sorry, Jay.
A month ago. See what I'm saying, I could've had a new truck for thirty-four thousand a year, but it's.
Thirty-four thousand for five years, six years.
Right, right, for five years.
Lot more money out the door in the end.
Right, how long do you think this truck would last if we did buy it?
If we bought it?
Get five or six years of it?
I, I wouldn't, I mean, as long as everybody takes care of it, yes.
That's on you, though.
That's, it is, it is. Okay, Nate's truck is, what's his, three years old, and it looks good.
It did look good.
I mean, we gotta sandblast the frame and repaint it, but that's just where we're gonna tear it.
Is that an okay plan?
So, we're on a table for two weeks?
Are we coming in for a special budget meeting or anything?
Oh, we are doing the, uh.
We're gonna do it to twenty-nine.
So, I mean, if you wanna put it on that one, that'd be fine with me.
That would be a week, that's a week.
That's a week, we can get by twenty-nine.
But I can, I can tell them.
If you can get up there.
I can tell them that we.
Hold on to it.
Okay.
But we need financing numbers.
Don't tell them.
It's a definite, but we're very interested.
No, don't make any commitments, I don't want that.
I can't bring it all?
No.
No, no.
Oh, you can't.
Not unless, not unless you're willing to commit a whole bunch of payment on your salary.
Jay, did I hear you say you withdraw?
Well, we're gonna table it, we're gonna, we're gonna table it.
So, we can with.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, well, I did say that first, but now we're just gonna table it.
All right, so we're, we're done with that, for the time being, but we should have some answers.
It should probably be in the minutes that we may do that at our next budget meeting, just because.
Well, we.
It sounds like time is important.
The, the twenty-ninth is, is a special meeting for the water and sewer, correct? Yeah. But we can, but the bond.
Do it at the regular meeting, two weeks, okay, two weeks.
We, I mean, it's not gonna.
I'd just like to have people up here and come in and comment.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. Okay. New business. Uh, is the bid on twenty-four Washington Street.
So, this is the tax sale we're conducting next week, on the twenty-ninth, nine AM. Uh, I'm asking the board if they would like to make the low bid of not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Is that what's owed?
Yeah, that's what's, that's what's owed, it, it will go up a little bit, just because of the days in the water, but.
Not to exceed what?
Five thousand.
What's your pleasure, folks?
Motion to have the town manager bid up to five thousand dollars on tax sale of twenty-four Washington Street.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing.
Looked quite like it does in today, then, as it did in the booster's picture, but certainly worth more than, than five thousand.
Is valued at what, a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty?
Well.
The town will not win this bid.
Good.
Yeah.
That was my, that's my concern, we're getting into the real estate business.
Just in favor of Joel here, it doesn't look like it needs to be demolished.
No.
Okay, so.
You got a moment?
We do. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Have we got any hits on the other one, Joe?
That goes. Resolution for the fuel tank loan payment.
Yes, so this is for that, uh, no-interest loan from the state of Vermont. Uh, twenty thousand dollars to be repaid over five years, there's four thousand dollars currently in the budget for that payment.
That covers the decommission.
Yes.
Pulling the tank, filling the hole in, or doing whatever they're gonna do to decommission. And new tanks?
Yes.
We do not have to do a brownfield sale with that.
We, uh.
Cause it didn't leak.
Yeah, it didn't leak, we tested it to see if it was leaking, and it came back that it wasn't, but then the Vermont kinda looked at us sideways and said, well, what if it does? At that point, it's kinda hard to argue with them, I mean, it might.
They will find out when they, by the time they get the numbers.
That's, that's what I mean, most of the, most tanks that come out of the ground have to go through the brownfield process, which means we have to put money aside.
Exactly.
But we don't.
No, we, it's, it's not leaking, this is, we're being proactive.
Why are you reading all that, Ron?
But, uh, because we had a, a guy come out and he checked to make sure it wasn't leaking.
There's only one way you can check and be a hundred percent certain.
Okay.
Test well.
But they did.
But they did, yeah, we, we had a guy that does this, this is, was his job.
Did a test well, Eric?
I don't think he did a test well.
But you can't, he, John's right, you can't tell if it's leaking.
I mean, they, they tested the tank to see if it was leaking, and it wasn't. That's what they did.
The pressure raising, it's just losing the pressure.
Well, I, even, yeah, my, even if leaking or not leaking, I'm just surprised they don't make us go through the process, it may be because we're a municipality.
But, yeah, the, the idea is to, uh, close it in place, and then move some tanks downstairs.
What's your pleasure?
Information that we borrowed twenty thousand dollars from Vermont Agency of Natural Resources for, uh, closing down the field, getting the fuel tank removed.
At zero zone.
Actually, you have to do that resolution.
Oh, same thing, okay, the driving board selectmen results borrowed twenty thousand dollars.
You got that all done.
From the Vermont, uh, Agency of Natural Resources, with the intent to close the underground fuel tank at five North Park Place. The loan will be paid within five years by annual payment, and the board authorizes Bob Richards, Chair of Fairhaven Select Board, to sign the proposed loan agreement.
All of that, is there a second? Sorry. Any other discussion? All of the favor?
Okay.
Opposed?
So, everybody signs this resolution, they will send a loan agreement that only Bob will sign.
It is to happen next year.
Yeah, construction won't happen this year, it's two weeks.
We need to.
And, yeah, and there's ten thousand gallons there.
We must need to, uh, adjust our budget, too, to save a little bit of money with the one-time dump. You're not gonna have a thousand gallons of storage, right?
Uh, I'm hoping to get twelve hundred gallons of storage, but for.
Ten thou, aren't we?
With ten thousand.
It's ten thousand, you're not gonna have a ten thousand, sorry.
No, there's not.
We may have to adjust there.
We only use about seven thousand gallons, about.
Right, but we may see thirty cents or something again. Didn't that, wasn't that the difference between the two last time? We'll check. We may have to just tweak our budget.
Okay, um.
Can I interrupt, interrupt?
Sure.
These young boys have to go home. But if I can request, um, positions, can you introduce yourselves?
Oh, yeah.
You're different positions, so.
Jeff Sheldon, I'm the secretary, board clerk.
I'm Bob Richards, I'm the chairman, we're all selectmen.
Yeah, I'm John, we're the selectmen. Jay Brown's the selectman.
Glenn Trevor's the selectman, next door neighbor, couple of those.
And Tom Manager, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm Joe, the town manager.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
You don't have to get a town like this, they can come anytime you want.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause it's so much fun.
It was interesting to me.
Yes, it is.
You think some loan, loan programs?
We have a lot on the agenda tonight.
Oh, that's long.
Sand bids?
Yeah, we only got one sand bid.
Like, yeah, really?
We didn't get the local guy? Didn't have it?
None.
No.
He was saying he was.
Hey, he said, he sent, he sent me an email, he said, I don't, I'm sorry, he said, I don't have any.
He would, I can't remember what he said was going on, but it's something.
My question is, is it some proof truck?
I believe so, Jay, it comes out of the damage.
On, we, we gotta go get it, well.
Can, uh.
Seven forty-five, I understand, we wanna make sure it's.
Some of, uh, our neighbors are hiring independent trucks to bring them in from places like this, I'm just wondering, is that any cheaper or no?
I thought you did anyway, I thought you did anyways, but Jim said, no, they.
No, usually, somebody.
They bring in.
Whoever bids it, usually trucks it. Like Markowski might bid in.
I would just wanna make sure.
Cause it's a low.
It's a good price.
Isn't it usually like sixteen?
A lot higher than seven, yeah, a lot higher than that.
That's what I thought, I just.
Yeah, that's not a bad price, Jay.
No, that's not what I mean, if it's not, if we gotta pay a truck on top of it.
I know.
So, motion to accept the bid, as long as it includes trucking, as long as it's a delivered price?
As long as it's a delivered, all right, for that amount of money.
Was that in our, was that, I guess, okay, is there a second, uh?
I'll second that, I have a question.
Is that in our spec, that it was delivered?
I believe it, I believe that's what Jim put on the, on the specs. The delivered price.
Alan, pay for reserve.
I'm a little worried about the project completion date, at three thirty-one, two thousand twenty.
Yeah, I can't believe he's put that on him.
All right, maybe we better. Very clarified.
Yeah, we can make some photos.
Yeah, I'll call him tomorrow.
So, the motion is contingent on delivered price?
Yep.
I'll soon.
And when they can bring it?
Seven dollar, five dollars, you are there.
Yep. Usually it's more than that.
But it's gonna be good sand.
It is, it is, it is good sand, I notice, I notice.
Any other questions on that, understanding that we're, we've got some contingencies? All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Thanks.
So, so if it's, if it's delivered price and.
Get it coming.
Get it, have it bring yet?
Yeah, start bringing it.
They got it before March.
Oh, I know, I know, I don't know why you put that on him.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure that they're not relying on that. Okay.
Should we put a completion date? Would you want to interrupt?
Like, December?
I would say November, the end of November, please. Completion.
Well, that'd make us have a motion, though.
Right, I'll make a motion that we add a completion date on the sand delivery by the end of November.
Second. Am I understanding that, all of them favor?
Yes.
Those opposed? Thanks. Eleven thirty. Okay.
We're getting right on time.
Really?
We're pretty close.
Okay, we are working on the public works budget, whole three.
You gotta change your capital reserve. You gotta put you in a truck.
Hope it starts on page twelve. Here, yeah.
Shit's always gonna start at the end of the budget.
Unless anybody's got any, we'll just, really, if we start at the top and work our way right through. And if you have questions, bark them out, because I'm gonna go down through. So, first line is, that's got anything on it is, uh, public work commission, adminis, administration salary. So, that's a split of you.
Nope, this is, uh, this is Sam and Jim. Sam's at seventy-five percent.
And you actually moved some stuff around this year?
Yes, this budget reflects some, some labor movement.
Increase.
Well, if you wanna give an overview, if you guys wanna give an overview first, that's fine.
That, that might answer some of the questions, some of the increases of saying, okay, it looks like.
Yeah, we, we, we did, it's, and I was, I was leery about the, the salary, we went back through and it just seemed wonky, uh, seemed not right. Um, we moved with, uh, personnel movement, we moved Buddy Bowen from the transfer station to DPW. Which was twenty-two thousand dollars into the budget. Um, I was gonna.
I thought you replaced somebody, how's that?
We, yeah, we, I. Wait for it. Um.
You replaced somebody, that might have already.
Go, 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 go.
Okay, so Buddy's money wasn't in there originally, it was an additional twenty-two. We were gonna replace, um, Jack with a Roustabout, a lower paid, uh, a lower paid laborer. We decided, based on what had happened with, uh, the previous, um, employee that was crashing up trucks, we figured we better get somebody who's more experienced. So, we had to increase that salary from the lower base pay up to almost nineteen dollars. And that's where you're seeing the increase right there. In terms of, oh, one oh, you're gonna see, uh, uh, Jim was moved from wastewater to transfer station, his salary is a new twenty-two thousand dollars, it's entered this budget. That money used to be paid out of the enterprise fund, now that money is paid out of taxes. So, that's why you, you see a, almost one percent increase, and it was more, it was entirely labor.
So, wastewater's gonna go down by twenty-two?
It should.
Maybe.
I guess my question is, if you take.
That's what I was hoping for, yeah.
My question has always been, if you take all the salaries and you add them up, do they come up to the same number?
Yes.
And do they equal what we actually pay? That's the question.
Yeah.
If they're distributed within the budget in a wonky way, for lack of a better word, it's inaccurate, but it's not wrong.
Yes.
So, I'm getting that, as long as it's.
I understand exactly.
The pot of money covers, how you allocate it doesn't.
See what Jim did, he put summer work and then he put winter work.
Well, so, it used to be when Jim did the budget, he would just add two percent to every one of the line items, regardless to, of where people moved or where they worked. And you ended up with some extra money in there. And you ended up with some extra money in there.
Yeah, and he did a three-year learning average.
Yeah.
Five-year, alright, five-year.
And it was close, but it wasn't specifically to the employees, and there was generally extra money.
Right.
Right? So, I'm just making sure there's the right in it.
But, the, these are actual numbers.
Actual numbers.
These are actual numbers, I-
Took everybody's salaries and you took them in there. It's a beautiful thing, good job. Alright, I trust you.
But, I got a question.
I, I gathered that.
Yes. Are your assumptions consistent with the contract? The union contract? You, you're assuming you're gonna bring in a, a higher paid person, okay? But when you, can you put, you advertise that job, someone else can say, I want that job. And if you have to give it to them, are you gonna still replace with a nineteen dollar? But, you, you said nineteen, whatever it is. Uh, you, that higher salary, the higher wage. You're not, you're not gonna replace the person that's lower with the higher?
They're all about the same. They're all about the same, Rob. They're all-
There's one that isn't.
Buddy, Buddy got, I think, when he getting thirty cent raise?
Yeah, he got thirty cent. There, there, there's nobody-
He was nowhere near nineteen. But he was eighteen something, and now he's nineteen.
Oh, geez, the last time I saw him, he was fourteen. Well, he was in transfer station.
Well, that must've been quite a few years ago.
Cause he was in the transfer station, so.
Yeah, he's-
Cause he was in a lower-
He's been making money.
Well, he was working two parts, actually.
Yeah. He was, he was up here working plus down there.
Okay.
So, he, he got, I think it was thirty, maybe forty cent raise.
Okay, so they're all around nineteen?
Everybody bumped up it.
Oh, okay.
But, they corrected it. So, everybody's, even the low man, gonna be about the same.
Yeah, I, I was hoping to see-
Buddy got a thirty cent raise from the landfill to the town office, or to the-
Yeah, something, he, he took on more responsibility, he was doing more, so we, we gave him a couple cents.
Well, because of the step, right?
It was a step.
Yeah, it was a step. Not really, it was just per the contract.
No, it was actually a step raise, it was, it was an actual raise, not just a two percent.
Well-
Yeah.
Are we saying the step?
Thirty cents an hour, that's only six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
We're saying the same, though.
I'm not saying that raise increased the, the budget, I'm saying he got a raise. I'm saying moving Buddy into the position, and then bringing another guy at eighteen thirty-nine an hour.
He was still being paid out of the public works for the landfill.
He wasn't, no, he was, his money was coming out of O one O, out of transfer station. All the money that we were hoping to save out of-
But don't forget, we're bringing another, what, you just say eighteen thirty-nine?
Eighteen thirty-nine.
But it's not, it's not additional person.
It's new money, though.
No, true, true.
So, I mean, you're actually historical-
It's less because it's, it's somebody replacing Jack.
Yeah, right, right, that's what I'm getting at. Which was to replace with a lick. So, some of these salary line items go up dramatically. Now, unfortunately, I don't see-
Better work, public works.
The adjusting number, the adjustment on the O one, the O one.
Well, you're saying everything shuffled. Everything moved from water to transfer to public works.
We bought an, an additional twenty-two thousand in, out of wastewater into our budget.
Right.
So, you're not-
The only place you're gonna see it go down is wastewater, is what he's saying.
Yeah, wastewater will, assuming that the new guy doesn't wanna up, up a dramatic raise. Ev- everything that we were gonna save out of Jack in the, in this coming budget, was eaten up by moving Buddy in, and having to pay a higher salary for an equipment operator, which we anticipated hiring somebody at the lower rate.
I know, what's a lower rate, in the fourteen, fifteen rate?
Ish, yeah.
Okay, you're still not talking thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
No, you're moving Buddy in, and then you're adding ten thousand dollars, you look the new guy.
Well, the-
Two and thirty dollars.
No, 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 see, it's not new money to the total picture.
That's what I'm saying, I, I don't, I don't see the O, O one, O two, O three. I can't see that.
Right.
And that's, I, when I was on the board, I always asked for, give me the twenty-eight.
Right.
So that I, you can see, there's X number of hours, there's X number of people. That's the, that's the total.
And divide it out.
Okay, and, and, and when you don't have a, a person, you're trying to fill a spot, you just make an assumption. And you say, okay, and now you just do the math, and you say, okay, it all adds up.
And that's what we did, we took the total amount that they would make.
Per year.
Per year, and then divided it out amongst the budget.
And you allocated it a little bit differently.
It's allocated differently, with an additional twenty-two moved into O one O. Cause we took, again, we took it out of wastewater and moved it into our budget. I thought there would be more savings too. I, I was, I was-
I was looking for the savings of not-
I was, I was disappointed in myself, I really was.
We are gonna see the savings in the sewer budget.
Sewer, a budget.
The sewer should be saved.
Wrong?
It's an assumption, we have to see what, we have to pay our-
Go through that budget. Any other to you next statements before you go on?
Yeah, I, I guess, uh-
We should. Let's move, let's go through. You can add comments as we go.
No problem.
Okay.
And I, I do have, if, if the board would like to see the, the breakdown of the salaries, I do have that. Hours, salary, and then totals.
Okay, um. I'm in, uh, O three O fifty-one hundred. So, anybody have any questions on that? Knowing this is the first poll. Fifty-one, ten. Once again, the, the summer salary, you, you pushed everything. You're up thirty thousand, twenty, twenty-nine, five, that's the explanation we're just, we're working with now. Questions, comments?
You, you're at the summer work now, out of the first category? So, the explanation of our actual, that was fifty-seven, and we're now looking at eighty thousand is why for summer? Salary, we're adding another person?
We did not add another person.
No, it's on dead, but-
We moved people around.
Buddy Bowen used to work at the transfer station. His, his budget is O one budget.
But, all that aside, I'm looking at where summer work salary was for the last year. I'm seeing a fifty-eight percent increase, and I'm going, where the heck? If we, if it all, someone left, someone got moved, it all should level out again.
Not here.
What, what caused us to jump to eighty thousand? That, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We doubled Buddy's salary because he came on full-time for DPW.
So, if we tried to pay full-time, double the salary, why are we hiring another person for public work?
And then, wait, wait, no, wait, wait.
Okay.
And we're also replacing the gentleman that left.
Yeah.
Jack. Right, so that, the additional twenty from Buddy, and then the new guy at eighteen thirty-nine, it, it eats up and adds to the budget, it eats up our savings.
Not what you said, and, and, again, I come back to see in the actual from eighteen ninety-
But when we go to the transfer budget, you're gonna see a drop. There's a negative number in the transfers. Is what you're saying, right?
I remember if there was negative in there, though.
There should be, um, because-
That's what you're saying.
Because Buddy's, most of Buddy's salary was in, uh, the O one budget.
No, cause we-
For, for transport station. So, that's why you see an increase in the O three budget, because most of his money is being, is, is now coming out of this, it's-
So, now you move Jim over into that spot.
And Jim made more.
So, you backfill that money, that one up. Sewer should go down.
Sewers-
It's a different budget.
But we had, we got the same amount of people working at public work right now that we had before. We haven't added anybody.
Correct.
At all, so-
I guess, I guess that's not a hundred percent accurate.
I mean, we had four guys working there before, you know?
Buddy is now full-time, though. He's, he was working part-time at the transfer station, and part-time with DPW.
But that's different budgets.
But what I'm saying is-
Different pockets.
You should only have to add this Buddy salary, nobody else's.
It doubled, plus the new guy.
We're replacing the guy that was already there.
I, I agree.
So, why is it, why is it, why is what it is?
I think the simpler way to do this is just to get a list of all the, all the employees, and make sure that the money matches at the end of the day.
Sure, that's, I, I do, I do have a copy of all the salaries, and, believe me, when I went through this, I had the same question when I, it's like, this just does not seem right. But, we sat down, and we, we tallied up all the salaries, parsed them out in the budget, and this is what we ended up with.
Because, you know, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money. Again, I, I, I don't wanna sound a little record, because, for, for twenty-six miles of road, it's a lot of money in salaries, and, and I'm saying it, as the appearance, that we're throwing more manpower than we originally had, by, by the dollar. Either that, if you've got the same number of people, you're paying quite a bit more money than you're paying. It's costing us more either way.
You have to understand. Part of that salary used to be in another budget.
I understand that.
It's not, right?
But, but, but at the end of the day, Department of Public Works, don't care how many people you have, X amount of hours, and you're paying so much to have a dump. I'm looking at this budget right here, and if you're giving me the same amount of hours, now if you're giving me more hours, more work, I, I, then I, I'm saying, okay, what's the work? I, I come back again, what's the work that I'm getting done with what I'm paying for, and I'm paying a lot of money?
It's, but, but, so I, I, okay, thank you, so I'm not explaining it correctly. When I say all of Buddy's salary is now coming into DPW, he was, I think, sixteen hours here before. Now he's forty hours, so you're getting about twenty out, you're doubling the number of hours with Buddy, which doubles the salary. So, that's, you are, you do have one half of an extra man.
That, and, and that would bring me to that eighty thousand. Half a hit.
His, so, of that twenty-nine, of that twenty-nine thousand, Buddy is twenty thousand of that, yes. So, now we have the new guy that comes in, we did see some savings with Jack leaving, cause he was highly paid. Right? So, now we have another guy coming in at eighteen and change, and now we see that number go up, because we moved twenty more hours of Buddy into this budget.
So, in effect, Department of Public Works went up a half a person.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't explain that clearly.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out how, and then I can do the math, or, or I can now understand how it got.
You're subtracting a half a person from somewhere else.
A half a person's gonna come out of wastewater.
And, and that half a person, when you look at overall budget, that half a person that went up here, I'm expecting to see that half a person go the other way. And if that happens, that's good, that's, that's what I'm saying.
O two, that's, the O two, but that's where Jim's coming out of.
Well, that really hit. I'm looking at the number, I just wanna understand.
Where it came from, no, I get-
But it's gonna skew public works and look like a big increase in public works.
Looks like a fifty-eight percent increase, you know? Fifteen, fifty-nine percent.
But it's gonna, you're gonna see it when you go to the water budget, I hope.
That's emerged.
But that's, that won't be discussed?
I'm just-
We're growing in margin.
I'm just saying.
Right.
Yeah, but, but that's-
I hope you'll see it.
Well, we'll-
That's why you gotta look at the report that he's talking about.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any more discussion on that? You're not convinced yet, Jay?
Oh, no.
Jay, I'll give-
Let's move on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you the, the breakdown of all the salaries.
I just, why I don't understand is, we still have the same amount of people working. All we gain is a half a person, that's all we've gained.
That's right.
Which is twenty-two thousand dollars.
So, it's twenty-two thousand, but we're, we're looking at, we're looking at twenty-nine thousand in one spot. Fourteen thousand in another spot. Um, you know, just, I just, but that's, let's just move on.
Still in fifty-one, ten.
In fifty-one, ten, I have fifty-one, ten dash twenty-one point two zero, I think. Where we were budgeted, uh, for nineteen twenty-five thousand, it dropped to two thousand. Now, I understand, I've been sitting in the game about going up, why are you complaining, cause it's going down? Well, because, there's a lot of stuff that didn't get painted, does that mean it's not gonna get painted, or, or, or we don't intend to? We must've thought we had to do quite a bit of painting to put five thousand in the nineteen twenty budget. We only spent six hundred and eighty-five dollars of actual in eighteen nineteen, so I'm, so I'm looking at saying, okay.
We got a lot of painting up over.
Tons of painting that needs to be done, and, uh, do we have enough money to get it done there?
So-
People complaining about crosswalks that they never ditched.
Yeah, but the painting couldn't be done before July one. We've got a lot to do from this year. And that money's already in here. So, if we're painting before July one, you're not gonna have to do as much painting in September, because you're painting that.
So, so, I work plan in, in May and June, it better show quite a few hours painting, cause that's pretty labor intensive, you know, the dollars may not seem big.
That is very difficult.
And my, and my question is, is it better off to hire it up, than hire guys up doing painting when they have to do a lot of it?
Well, I think it would turn into like fifteen thousand.
And we have, we have the equipment.
If you hire it, and you have the equipment.
They're reflecting, what's that?
It's just the paint.
It's just the paint. This is just the paint? This has nothing to do with labor?
This is, this is the cheap paint.
Well, that was my question, is this the, the reflective?
Right, this isn't the fancy paint.
The paint that lasts two years, so.
It's the paint that works for the summer, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
My personal opinion-
The reason we went-
I'd like to see it taped.
We went to the cheaper paint, because we thought we could paint it twice. And still be cheaper.
We were trying to, we were trying to find a place to, uh, save-
Years ago, and then we just stopped painting.
And I, I understand that one there, but then, we were gonna paint it twice, and we can't even get time to paint it once. Can't even paint it once, so I'm going, okay, gotta relook that, even, and my only reason for bringing up that line item is saying, is that if we're serious about painting-
Cause we're doing all kinds of extra stuff, like ditching.
Like I said.
I'm just saying.
Outside people-
That's what I asked.
I, I get you, and I'm going, okay, I know the ditching has to be done too, but-
Painting doesn't do that by itself.
And, and, where you're-
And we've been down a guy, right?
Did you think that?
You're down two guys, most of the time.
Right.
Right.
That's why I love to work.
So, I can't yell at Sam completely for that.
I, I, I understand, and, and, but, and, I, I make the assumption in the summer, even though you're down two people, you go up, and you, you get temporary summer help and get it done. You can't, you can't do that?
Well, we know it.
Huh?
We didn't get any help.
No, but did we?
We used the summer guys a little bit more than, yeah. So, so, so that question, though, Glenn.
Can we do it?
Yeah. Um, they're gonna, they're gonna repave this, and they're gonna repaint it too, so that, that money's coming right out of our budget.
And I understand that we thought twenty-two A was gonna get, it'd be a waste of time, painting, but I, I get all that, too. My, my question on this line item is, I don't have any, I said, I don't have enough money in that particular line item, but-
Well, this is where you propose to look more.
No, I, I, if, if you did the right, the right paint, and only painted once, instead of painting it twice, we don't have enough money yet.
No.
Get us, get us a number of what it would cost to do the right, the, the good paint and.
You can get a bid on having somebody do it too.
Yeah, if you want, just to find out what it costs, so everybody knows where we're at and see, and, I mean, I, it would be nice to get, to be able to get back to being able to afford the good paint and, and us put it down.
But how soon do you do it? You're gonna like, you're gonna have.
Three times, at least.
You're gonna have at least fifteen thousand.
Yeah, well, yeah, so.
I think just getting them painted one time with the chi on paint would be better than we are today.
But, but they come in and have it all done in a whole town in two days.
Right.
It takes us.
I agree.
For two weeks to get.
Well, and the other, and I get it next year, the state's probably gonna send.
I don't know, I don't know the answer.
They're not gonna do part of the town, yeah.
Well, uh, let's, give us an idea of what the, what the, the good paint costs and, and if you can get a real rough sketch of, of somebody doing the thing.
What, so to answer the question, what did this number reflect, the two thousand?
Sam put five thousand into the budget. I whacked three. I flat funded that, uh, from previous years. There's been, there's been no use out of painting.
And, and what I saw is, I agree, cause I drive around, I can tell there's no extra, but I'm saying, we should be painting.
That's fair.
And in your mind, the five thousand is gonna paint with the more reflective paint or, okay.
Well, let's just find out.
Yep.
I mean, it's stupid, it's stupid not to know.
The.
Just getting the idea.
Any other questions there?
Fifty-one-ten, twenty-one point four zero. Saw that, uh, again, it's one of those where I see a big swing in the budget, I just wanna ask the question, just what is O S safety first?
Oh, uh, safety equipment.
Is that from a couple of years ago when we had the audit?
So there was, uh.
Signs and stuff.
No. Safety equipment and a ditch box was actually in there that was never purchased, so we whacked, so we whacked it out of there.
Yeah, and that, and that ditch box, we gotta add that back in, cause I gotta buy it this way.
Because.
We have a ditch box.
It's not, it's not OSHA approved.
Right. Why not?
Why not? We bought it OSHA approved.
This is what Aaron told me.
Now, Aaron told me he couldn't lift it with the backhoe. Now he got an excavator.
Now you got an excavator to lift it.
Well, I don't know for the lifter.
You couldn't lift it without a backhoe too.
Well, let's find that out. Let's find that out because this is the stuff.
Trevor said it was OSHA, it's not OSHA approved.
Yeah.
It's a heavy book.
Yeah.
No, that, I'm just, that was in his notes on his computer, so.
Well, they just didn't like using it anymore. He didn't wanna use it.
He didn't read it. And it probably is heavy and cumbersome. He wanted the.
Now, now I have to say, we should spend money in two places. I began further on the line items and I, here, I, I, I think we wanna know why we couldn't cut like fifty-one-ten, fifty-six point one zero. Where, where, and that's the outside.
That's paving.
That's paving.
Is that the outside road work?
That's paving.
That's paving.
Okay, we don't call it paving, we just call it outside road.
Did you see how everybody jumped on you that time?
Yeah, okay, then, then that's a good, with the more money, that one's fine.
That, that one.
I thought that was doing another Bigelow Hill and I'm saying, I don't wanna do another Bigelow Hill.
That, that one I upped to thirty-five thousand.
I like to see, after we get all done with our budget, I like to talk about, seeing about putting a line item on the board to see if the people wanna put extra money into the budget. So we can work on.
Like make a paving reserve or something?
No, I mean, add it, add it, put that line item, say fifty thousand dollars, okay?
It's a lot now.
If the people would vote, put it on as a line item, not in our budget, put it on as a line item where they vote on.
Then they can choose.
And if they want it, fine, if they don't, but if they do vote it in, they'll give us two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for paving. Anyway, let's go through our budget first and then talk about that stuff.
Maybe no.
That's, that's just something. We gotta get, we gotta get caught up on our paving.
I, I had good luck with that in my last time. People, people were very appreciative to be asked.
Because we've had so many people complain about the road. We should give them, if they wanna spend the money.
They wanna spend it, that's the biggest.
Then that, then that can go out.
That's all I have now.
Hey, anybody else? Winter work, fifty-one forty. Once again, the salary is gonna.
They have to be explanation, because it could be down to one.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna beat that horse anymore.
I, I'll, I'll provide the board with the numbers on it.
Wonder, wonder on, uh, fifty-one forty, fifty-six, what are other percons services doing? Not even in there, it's taken out.
Taken out.
Oh, yeah.
But what is it we took out?
Somebody before, we've had people come in with a grader, they laced up.
Pushed, snow rings back.
Outside trucking come in.
Yep. Take the snow piles out.
Snow, yep, that's.
Okay. Don't need it.
That's really, no, because we've got.
Big truck.
Last year, we didn't care, but I mean, it was just. They got grader.
Beautiful.
How about fifty-one forty dash twenty-one point two zero of the sand? We just did sand tonight. It looks like we, we got our sand for seven thousand something.
Yep.
And our actual was nine thousand and we're asking for thirteen five. Can we cut that one back?
If we find out if the sand is gonna be delivered.
If it's delivered, if it's delivered, we can bring that back, but.
It may.
Dollar seventy-five a yard.
Depending, yeah.
Dollar seventy-five a yard.
But you've got a, you've got a good point.
But on the other hand, on the other hand, you don't really wanna cut your sand, because then if you start having a hard winter, then you have to have some more sand.
Wait a second. Does this have any of the gravel in it or is that in the other side?
That's not a summer. Gravel, gravel in both, Minnesota.
Oh, there is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Graveling both, right?
Yeah, gravel's in here.
Figured out why there's so much gravel in the winter time.
Yeah, that's, I don't know why the, there's a lot of this jail, I think should be switched around.
Well, that's a, that's a, we've talked about that a million times, and why isn't there more, maybe we take part of this number, put it into the summer and, and not have so much, you know?
In some areas, you can do summer work right, a lot later.
Yeah, I know.
It's.
Well, the reason.
Box yourself in.
The reason we don't move line items all the time is for continuity and budget season.
Yeah.
But, once in a while, if you do a shuffle.
That causes trouble.
It, like you're seeing with the labor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we've got seventy-five hundred, we've got seventy-five hundred in both, on both of those line items, right? Yeah.
We got fifteen thousand, no, but the.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, that, that's, that's the question, can we live, who gives a damn where you use it?
Right.
I mean, it's just one line item. Can we, can we put twelve thousand in summer, and if we gotta use it, we use it in the winter?
I mean, I, I, if you don't, I'd rather have it moved somewhere than take it away.
Right, don't like to take, when I was talking.
Of course you would. That's your, that's your job.
But I'm living on this one, take three thousand and deliver it back over to the paint or something.
Right. No.
No.
They don't deliver any gravel in winter.
Agreed.
Gravel is all stockpile in the summer.
Agreed.
Well, yeah.
Do we use it?
I think it.
Oh, it's because we use it in a separate time?
Yeah, but I don't know that it's that big of a deal, and I don't know, I mean, the only thing I'm concerned about is, is do we, do we use it, you know? Says we do.
What's down for stockpile of gravel in the office?
I haven't used any of it, it's junk.
I mean, the gravel, the gravel we got last year.
You, you guys paid a lot of money for that and it's.
Only got it kept still.
I ran through it with the loader the other day and it sunk in this much.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's much, it goes in terms of much.
Well, that's good, though. Can we use that?
I, I think, I think what we, what we should do is, this budget, to keep it the same, and then next year, see what I use. And then we can go from there and, cause I just go to Charlie's and get it.
Sam, wouldn't it, wouldn't it behave us, if, I don't know if that stuff is worth doing for winter sand or screen.
I don't think so. It's got market, that's what the sand was.
There's too much clay, there's too much clay.
Yep.
But we could use it for, don't we have to go up the shoulders?
We can do the shoulders, yeah.
Take a bunch of it.
So we could use it up there for the shoulders.
Okay.
So that'll save us some money.
Is it gonna hold?
It'll hold, I mean.
If it muds up like that?
Yeah, but on the shoulders, you're not gonna be grabbing through.
Right.
So it will pack in. Anyway, and, you know, so you're not gonna. You know, you, you, when you're putting it in, I mean, once you get a white shoulder, you can always hit it with a roller tool and just make sure it's in there and then just leave it. But you're gonna save some money there, like the, I mean, instead of buying other material, do that shoulder we already got.
Yeah, no way.
That's, that's my.
But I agree with what you're saying, leave it where it is now, and then next year.
Next year, see what I've used on, on my gravel.
All right, let's keep going then. And that, there's nothing else in winter work? Public Works building.
Fifty-three-ten-ten again, that's spreading out the salary again that we've been, we keep seeing it in each other item?
So what they did in the past was they took the total number, the total amount of salary and then broke it out by percentage of where it was used. So out of that hundred percent, say, out of a hundred thousand, there would be three percent used here, and that's what that number would be. Um, we tried to keep, stay consistent so that way it'd be easier to follow. There, there was talk about lumping everything into one pot, but that would look like, I mean, it would blow your mind, yeah.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, if I, if I lumped everything into summer work, it'd be a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still the same money, but.
It's still the same. It just looks.
It would just be like backup at the top, you'd have like a public works salary line.
Salary line, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I was.
I don't have a real.
I mean, you're on track if you have one lump of salary and then you allocate to all these line items as actuals.
Yeah.
Just, cause you still wanna track what you did throughout the year.
That's right.
So, but just, in that way, you just, what can I say, well, there's fif, just using numbers, fifty percent of the public works salaries are in this line item, okay? And twenty percent is in O two and thirty percent is in O one, whatever the numbers come out to be. And that way you can look at, okay, this is fifty percent of the salary. That's it, and you allocate its actuals.
That's what I wanted to do, just have.
Well, that would, that would make, that would make the, that would make everybody happy in, in town, cause they could see what it costs.
And, and then all these discussions about winter work. They're irrelevant. They're, they're purely actuals.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's, you're right, all the way over here. The money's there for paid values every year.
Right, it's the twenty-eight.
You just, at the end of the week, when the slopes come in, show where it went.
Show where it went, and that, that's just, it pop, gets populated throughout the year, and that way, if you have a long summer and short winter or very, vice versa, every year is a little bit different and you look at the actuals and say, okay, well, you know, this is where we did our work, and you can answer the questions.
Because like, the way it's now, they decide to start, what is the cutoff between summer and winter?
Yeah.
And you're still doing summer work. You're taking, I mean.
And, and, and you'll, you'll take, how many hours does a board sit there and discuss how much labor goes into summer versus winter?
Continuously. One lump, sorry.
Right. It might be a big number, but at least you know exactly where it comes from.
It'd be interesting to see what that line item would look like for future, for, in your spare time.
Well, can you just sum them up and put up a column?
Yeah, I can do that. We, we had it in there all bunched up into one line item anyway, but we broke it out because we, we wanted to be a little more transparent about where the cash was going.
Yep.
I'd leave them both in.
Leave them both in?
Yeah, just put a line in that doesn't tally. Just put one top line in that doesn't add in.
Just for our, I mean, not for the final.
Just so we can see what total Public Works.
And if we decide, if, if, if that's comfortable, then we could always change it for the tally meeting.
Carry over, so you can see all the actuals.
I mean, for the, for the book. I mean, it's.
I have an idea.
It's.
Could I like accept?
You know, it's all the same money. And it is true, it's. Twenty-eighty. Uh, anything else there, Public Works building, equipment?
Another question, we're not charging for oil and hydraulic oil and degree? Uh, hydraulic oil here, but it's a toll under one.
Yeah, I put, I put that up into repairs and maintenance.
Yep, okay.
I, I just. It, it comes, I mean.
Put it in one.
It's just so much easier.
Repairs and maintenance in, in Public, in Public Works?
Right, right.
Okay, yeah.
This one's bringing up.
Yep. Anything else there? License registration is just cause we're gonna have the other, oh, what do we got there?
Now, that's, that should be, it should go up a little bit, cause we're gonna, no, cause we're not adding the truck, so it shouldn't stay the same.
It's up four fifty, I mean, it's not a big money, it's just.
Yeah.
It's up. And that's what you spent last year, never mind. You spent that, so that's actual. Okay, all right, no upset about that unless anybody's got a question. Chainering equipment. I'm moving on. Hydrant replacement.
Sam, did you get the cap?
Well, we're gonna start flushing, um, I think Thursday we're gonna start flushing. I, I, my, my intentions was yesterday, but I didn't have enough hands to, to do it, so.
Do you replace any hydrants this year?
No, but we need to.
But you have three or four down there?
Yeah, they've been there for a while, they're, they're due.
Are we gonna find that they don't work, cause they've sat there?
No.
Just asking.
I, I, I would say no.
I don't know.
They should work.
They're just, they're a little wasssy anyway.
I don't know anything.
Yeah.
They might know something.
I ask stupid questions and get good answers, I hope.
Debt management, not a heck of a lot we can do there, huh?
Well, except you're gonna have to add the truck.
Yeah.
Ninety-one fifty debt management, the total, it, it, the debt management went up because of the equipment we bought this year? Is the assumption I'm making, I'm just checking for, heading on to say, I'm saying, okay, that was a, when you get a sixty, one sixty-nine percent increase, you're saying, okay, what, what caused that? And so we went, we bought like the.
Stuff.
Stuff this year.
It ain't over yet, cause we're looking at.
And that's only, that's only the stuff in finance.
And that's only the finance.
Something's changed on you.
Then remember the I outrun.
Remember that.
Right.
So like this truck we're talking about financing, that, that twelve or fifteen thousand will go to that.
Will go into this.
I believe.
Paying over on that.
So, folks, that is the first run-through.
Well, and so overall, if I'm reading this, the, the Public Works summary, line item there, the, the Public Works summary that says there was a, a, a ten point zero nine percent increase.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at it and going, okay, am I making the right assumption once, cause I think that's pretty high, but I'm saying, well, because of the salary things, the number of people, it inflated that.
Another thirty thousand, another thirty thousand at least in, in, um, paving.
That, that ten percent should go up now.
But when I, when I look at a.
Oh my gosh.
Two million dollar, when I look at two million dollars and see thirty thousand, I'm saying, okay, there's more. I, when I look at a department and see what, what, what's going on and if our overall general budget's going up by three and a half percent right now, I'm saying, okay. And this department, I'd start out with, I wanna see three and a half percent, and tell me what changed, why it isn't three and a half percent. So I look at that ten point zero nine, it's quite a bit higher than three and a half percent. I don't believe salaries.
Half of it's paving, right?
Paving.
Were there ten thousand? No, it was actually paving.
Ten thousand?
No, there's three.
Oh, ten thousand, there's a variance. Oh, ten thousand, I'm sure.
So, so now you're down to fifty, and was there twenty-nine in salaries or twenty-two?
It was, it was mostly, it was mostly salaries, yes.
Salaries was a chunk and any additional paving.
Paving was a chunk.
Salaries was thirty thousand.
Be ten percent.
I'm saying there's like twenty thousand miscellaneous spread through the budget.
Right.
Besides the salaries and the paving.
Right, and, and fourteen thousand of that is, is. Forty, fourteen thousand is debt payment.
Well, fourteen thousand of his equipment, yeah.
Oh, you have seventeen, seventeen-three percent.
No.
From what it was last year.
Right, but fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars.
Fourteen thousand is the extra.
So you take that, thirty thousand dollars worth of salary and, uh, and twenty, or ten thousand dollars worth of, of extra paving.
So, and, and most of being my first budget going through and working that smaller, learning screen, is that, is that ten percent because I, I don't pass it. That's something, that's something I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see, well, this must be a blip on the screen, cause the ten percent increase year over year, I don't think it's the same, no.
Well, first of all, I make a suggestion that the variance is really misleading, because that's a variance between the twenty. Well, first of all, I make a suggestion that the variance is really misleading, because that's a variance between the twenty nineteen, twenty budget, which is what Sam wants. And the proposed, which is what Joe's agreed to, we're suggesting, as I understand it.
No, I.
But that, that's not a year over year variance, that's, that, that's between the last two columns, which are.
No.
It does appear to be.
No, no.
That's what it's adding.
I, I always read that and I could be wrong. I mean, I, I've always read that as a variance between last year's and this year's.
That's not what it's adding with fifty nine.
Yeah, maybe I'm.
Right in the math, wouldn't it be a hundred?
Saying what I, how I'm interpreting it.
Oh, that's right. It's fiscal year nineteen twenty, it's the difference between fiscal year nineteen twenty and then the proposed.
That's right.
This year's budget.
So, okay, there may be uninterpreted, then, we're in the nineteen twenty now.
Yes.
Okay, that's me, sorry.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, and it's almost six hundred thousand, went up to six hundred fifty, yeah, six hundred.
That was me.
So, we went up sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Around sixty thousand in the actual.
It's right here.
It's right there, but I'm saying, oh, okay.
What's salaries up? Twenty or two or twenty nine?
Twenty nine.
Yeah, something. Oh, no, no, I, I gotta go back through and add it.
No, it's more than that.
Twenty nine plus fourteen?
Plus fourteen, yeah.
And plus twelve hundred.
So there's three, three line items in salary that went up. Thirty thousand, fourteen, so forty four and then another thousand, twelve hundred, so, so it's forty five, forty five, forty.
I get fifty five.
How do you get that?
Twenty nine, fourteen and twelve, oh, twelve hundred, sorry.
Twelve hundred was building, public work building.
Yeah, nevermind, it's a forty five, or.
So that, that's forty five of that fifteen, fifty nine and then ten thousand more.
So he.
I mean, it, it looks like the, the budget for public works went like this, it's gone like this and it's gonna be.
It, last year it went like this and it went like this and then this year it went like this.
Oh, again?
That, last year we did like twenty percent increase.
And pretty soon, I'm saying, not sustainable.
Well.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, Glenn, is I'm trying to get it so we're in a, we're in a, the equipment's in a rotating. Everything is gonna rotate out and my budget's gonna stay the same.
So this.
You'll have a, you'll have a small increase, but everything will stay pretty low.
This, this budget is not done.
Oh, no.
I, I just want to.
Forget that. We add another, whatever that finance charged for a year's worth of, of a three year payment out of.
It's coming up.
If we buy that truck. When we buy that truck.
So, to, to your ten percent point though, we were able to keep it down because we just whacked elsewhere. O one O is up like one and a quarter, which means that while everybody got salaries, the other things that need to get done, there's no money for it.
Well, it looks like.
It's just, we're trying to keep it at three percent and, and highways are the board's priority, so that's what we focused on this year and last year.
Well, it looks like of the total fifty nine thousand, ten thousand went to paving, fifteen thousand went to debt repayment, forty five thousand went to labor. And then they actually cut the budget by ten in the other spots. To get to the fifty nine.
I understand what you're saying, I, I, I just do the math, come up with that, the total dollars and I still come back and say, if I can afford three people in public works and I've got four, or four, I'm just using the example, four and a half, sooner or later you gotta make a decision, maybe all you can afford is three people. And instead of just, we can, we can justify the increases all, I mean, by what we're spending, but.
Remember that when we talk with other parts of the budget, that same speech.
I, I, I remember what you're talking about, I agree, but it's true in that area as well.
It.
And you come in, remember when you come in and say, I need a pot.
I.
That's right.
I under, I understand.
You need your road plan.
I, I understand.
Well, I don't feel that we're overstaffed at the highway department, I would have done.
I, I'm not saying.
We're getting, three years ago, I would say they're overstaffed, but we don't get any work done, two years ago, three years, but now we're getting work done. And, and, and it's, and it's showing what we're getting done.
Last year and this year, there was a significant O three increase, which was offset by O one. Last year it was the same way, I think. I, it's not sustainable, but it's also not, not gonna happen forever. This, this one is equipment purchases. I, you know, we, we probably oughta, we probably oughta bite the bullet and say, we need to spend two hundred thousand dollars a year on paving. We, a hundred thousand dollar was the old number that we always used. And it, and I, you know, that's back when, when, you know, fuel was whatever it was, you know? And paving was, we got a lot done with a hundred thousand. Probably not realistic anymore, but we're cutting.
I think you're right, Bob.
And I don't think it's, it lasts, I mean, that's, that's my point, is I don't think that, that ten percent increase lasts, it's just catching up. And then you get up to here, next year, you should see a much leveler.
We lost all of last year's paving because of doing that South Main Street.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause that entire budget went for that. All type of road.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's really, well, what else, what else we did West Street?
West Street, not last year.
That was you, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And figure it is, Bob, with, with length of West Street, pay the high, how many side streets here?
The public works labor only went down forty five hundred dollars in the O one O.
Public works labor?
Yeah. That, that means O two O must have gone down a lot.
You, you'll see there's seven, ten thousand dollar reduction in transportation.
Yep, but there's an increase of fifty five hundred someplace else. In cemeteries.
Yeah, there was a little bit in cemeteries.
That's, that's not a little bit, a lot of it. That's a difference of forty five hundred dollars. You take fifty five hundred from ten thousand, it's forty five hundred. And that's the reduction in the O one O. That means the, that forty five thousand dollars that went up in O two O. Most of that is coming, forty thousand has gotta be coming out of O two O.
Let's hope, Joe.
Yeah, twenty, twenty thousand, maybe thirty. Hey, I, I'm right there with you, man. That's, I sat and I looked at these numbers over and over again. It didn't seem right. But I'll, I'll, I'll give you a kind of. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, it very well could be that I misplaced a zero, but.
We'll find it.
We'll find it. I hope you do, cause that, that number's a lot higher than I wanted to find.
The trick is, we don't wanna find it the day we're coming in to sign the budget.
Done that before.
No, that was seventeen percent.
That was traumatic. Still, I have PTSD from that. Yeah, that was, that was rough. Okay, we said we would, uh.
What do you got?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, just as a part of the discussion, um, I used last year's tax, um, tax calculation sheet and added a hundred thousand dollars to it, to the budget. To see what that looked like for your taxes, for the fair hated taxes. Um, I, for your average homeowner of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, every hundred thousand dollars this board adds will add about sixty five dollars to your tax bill annually. So just something to keep in mind. Every hundred thousand dollars is about sixty five dollars per, per household.
Average.
Average. Average household's a hundred and forty thousand dollar sale.
We used to figure twenty thousand dollars was a penny on two million. We used to figure every, every ten thousand was a penny, but we, we got a larger budget.
Well, I think, I think it's closer to fifteen, no?
Might be, might be. Anyway. We're at nine o'clock.
You gave us a schedule, just the proposed schedule for doing the rest of them, uh, all of the, on the topic.
Yes, and as we pull in new numbers for DPW, we'll squeeze that in there so that the board can look at that as well.
So.
Have department heads gotten this?
Parking lot stuff for that, for this budget is, you're gonna give us a line item showing salaries, flat salaries.
Yeah, I have that all developed and I'll get it to the board.
And you're gonna give us the salaries, the changes, right?
Yes, but.
Everybody, what, what you were talking, yes, he says.
Yes, whatever you want, I'll, I'll get it, yeah.
No problem.
All right, I want a one percent increase.
Yeah. No, well.
No, the, the salaries, you were gonna, you said you were gonna show where everybody changed and.
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, I have it all broken out, right?
Okay. Any other questions or?
No, not, I mean.
Directions for the board.
Not, not a bad pass for your first pass out of here.
No, next pass, just add another ten percent.
It's not, it's probably pretty close to the, what should be added, but I wouldn't go spend that money up.
No, I, I would like to see a little more money in the payment.
I think we're, we've, we've gotta get over that number. I've gotta get over that number, I know that. Okay, um, parking lot.
Um, paving schedule, I actually crunched the numbers today, I finally got all the, the, um, formulas working right. I still do have to sit down with Sam though, um, just to make sure that it's what he's thinking. Oil tank replacement, we're moving forward, shed, salt shed, we're moving forward, personnel policy's on there, uh, it's way outdated. Um, we're gonna update that.
Can you get a boilerplate from, um, VLCT, VC, uh, VLCT?
For the personnel policy?
Yeah, they probably have that.
Yeah, can.
Or you're just gonna go through yours?
I, I was just gonna go through mine, but we, we can compare them and see where they match up, yeah.
I, I, because there's a whole bunch of stuff, you gotta be.
Take that one off, you know?
I would.
Take the one, you see, you send me a try, but.
Yeah.
Then you have, well, you play with a little bit.
I'll, uh, I just wanna grab my personnel file and just, everything you're not supposed to do. Don't do this, don't do this. Then the last thing that's on there is don't do nothing.
Don't do nothing.
Don't say this. Okay.
And I'm, I'm gonna add the firearm policy to that, to the.
Yep, I put on, uh, and the park lighting on that.
The park lighting?
He's on that, you're on that.
Yeah, no, we get that.
Park lighting.
Firearms, is that a policy or?
Ordinance, I don't.
Oh, it'd be ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
It would be, if we do it, if you do.
While we're talking, this may not be the place, but let me throw that anyway. We haven't brought up in a long time, the, the bridge down here.
Adam Street.
And, 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 uh. Maybe that, I, I, I don't know, but maybe we just need that in our parking lot, because I, I forgot about it, I'm sitting back saying, okay. We were talking about getting some monies and we're talking about possibly taking the, the old bridge they took out. By Brook Farm and I, and, and try to repurpose it and, and want to squarely on that bridge, so some, some.
I'll tell you what the bridge, they're paying a small fortune for it.
Yes, they were.
And New York State was paying the bulk of it, so the house was a small fortune, had it.
What did they do? They rented that?
Yeah, so good.
It was a eighty twenty deal, long plenty of eighty in New York.
But, so for Adam Street, we did, uh, write a, I think it was a one point two million dollar grant, uh, we should be. We'll hear about that in November, maybe early December, if we get it or not.
I, and, and I was looking for, can we have that added to the parking lot, uh, so that it's in front of us? I, I want to see it, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
Would you prefer to have just a list of pending grants separate from the agenda?
That could be true.
Like that's, he's saying, he's got a grant waiting.
Well, right, and, well, that's another, depends on, it depends on the, the board here. I, I'm looking, we've got so much going on in grants that my, I, I don't know what it's like to talk. I, I can't imagine your world, Joe, but I'm saying, there's a point where I think we got a lot of grants and we should start consciously saying what grants we.
Prioritize.
We want, because you're gonna have matching monies, it isn't an endless pit either. So, we, we went from, for a long time now, free, you joke, with no, with no grants really happening. To a whole bunch of grants, now I'm still, I'm.
More reason to have a list of grants.
Right.
With, with a number, with how much the match is.
So it's a.
So don't match.
I, I guess.
That would be nice.
And what it, what it's gonna do.
I, I agree.
We get that, yeah, that's in my head.
I knew that's where you were headed.
All the grant match that has come out, I mean, like, like for the Adam Street Bridge, it comes out of the bridge reserve. We have seven thousand dollars coming out of the grant match fund for revolving loans and that's it, right now.
Right. I see the financial report talks grants, but even as we, when we are going and jumping on grants. And I know timing for getting the grants in is important, but I feel as a selectman, I'm just a little disconnected with. What's that process for saying, let's go for this grant? I think there's some grants out there, even if, I don't think we should go for every grant, there's some grants out there, and sure, I'm not saying we are, but. I couldn't tell you. What that is.
Normally Glenn, when, if, so for example, the park lighting in the, the parking lot, I'll, I'll develop a grant. And then I'll come in and, and let the board know this is what the total is and this is what, this is what I'm asking the board for match. Cause I can't expend out of that fund, that's your, that's the money that the board spends.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, it's not just a, just, it's not just a Joe thing, we all have.
No, no, but.
But we, I, I get a little nervous every time we allocate out of that fund for a grant that's three years in the future or for. I just, I, and we aren't really, but it, it feels like there's a lot of hands going into that one pot.
Yeah, there's none.
And there's not.
There's really not, it seems like.
I ask that every time we do a grant, I say, is there enough money in there to do it? And what about the other ones? And I just was gonna lay it out.
Yeah, I, I can give a list of everything that's pending and everything that we have, so that's.
All right, anything else?
No, that's not for me.
Round table?
Any bids on South Main Street?
I'm sorry, no, not at all. Oh, that's not true, we had one young lady come in and ask what the price was. She didn't offer anything.
Talked about the sideline project, right? Interested for executive? I see we have a leaf bagger now for our scag landlord and Joel's using that and picking up the bags and dumping them in the cart and working pretty good. Have we got our insurance, Reginald Costa, medical insurance and property managers are?
We've got honor. I told her we're gonna, that's, uh, the schedule for November nineteenth and I let our insurance company know that we'd like to have it before then. They promised it to us last month.
I thought about that.
Didn't get it.
That's medical insurance?
Well, liability, the town liability.
But, that's different.
You want the whole portfolio anyway.
Uh, yeah, I need everything out of the budget, yeah, for the budget. Jenny, we'll begin to talk about that.
I've got nothing. Okay, Mr. Manager?
Uh, checkbook, six hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred seventy four dollars and twenty nine cents. And a motion to pay the general fund warrant, one hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety four dollars and seventy eight cents.
Second.
Second. And there's eleven thousand in there for demo.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, twenty one, twenty nine thousand, three hundred two dollars and seventy four cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. John?
Oh, yeah. This contract stuff?
Uh, contract.
Two of them, right?
Personnel and.
Two more of them.
Yep.
ESA A one F, board agrees that premature general public knowledge is possible. We use against the town clinic places, the board has flagged them, have a substantial dispassion for.
ESA A one F, board agrees that premature general public knowledge is possible. Appeals against the town political places, the board has flagged them, have a substantial dispossessment, certificate, call for fraud, and motion to, try to move it. Enter executive session to discuss confidential, friendly client communications, ladies and gentlemen, service and board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You might wanna make one for personnel, too, that, that at least. Yeah, but it's not on that motion, just.
I've got another one.
There you go.
Is it personnel general?
No, just, just one that, for personnel, so we know where the motion.
Executive session, we talked about personnel.
First, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed?
Both of those are just with the town manager?
Yeah.